At six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Our heavenly Father, I thank you for the opportunity for me to be here and share the prayer with you in this meeting that they're having, that everything goes good. And we thank the mayor and the mayor pro team, team, and all the councilmen and clerk and city minister and the attorney and the people that run this up here. It takes a lot of work in remembering all this stuff they have to do. And I want to thank all the police department with the things they had to do, especially this week, and the fire department and out there in this nasty weather that they have, that they all made it through. Hopefully, they are all right and everything's all, all the electric's still back on. And I thank you that. And I thank you for all the city workers that make the city go around and our city can prosper from this all the time and we grow and keep growing. And we thank you in Jesus's name. We all say amen.
Thank you. You'll take the roll, please.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Marcos?
Here.
Councilman Blevins?
Here.
Councilman Schleck?
Present.
Councilman Valerius?
Here.
Councilman Lloyd?
Here.
Pro Tem Lally?
Yeah.
And Mayor McLeod?
Here.
We have a call, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lally, second by Mr. Schleck. Any corrections?
Correction, Mayor. I'd like to correct. I think it's resolution number seven on the last. Did I vote at no on that resolution?
Yes, we're on the agenda for tonight. We're not on minutes.
Oh, I thought you said minutes. I'm sorry.
No, I asked for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. That was Mr. Lally and Mr. Schleck. Are there any corrections or changes to the agenda? Hearing, not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of February 14th.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins, second by Mr. Lally. Any corrections?
Thank you, Mayor. Now I would like to make the correction, please, to, I believe it's resolution seven. I voted no on that.
Madam Mayor, that would be on the first, second page, one, two, three. Fourth resolution down, 27, February 14th. I only had Blevins casting a no vote, so I apologize. And if they are adopted, that as amended, then I will reflect it in the minutes.
Do I need to call for the original to, motion to adopt the minutes as amended?
You just say as amended. We do it that way.
Motion.
Motion and second.
Second.
That was second by?
Valerius.
Valerius. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Presentations. We have a presentation this evening from the Wayne Metropolitan Community Action Agency.
I took me through the chair. We've got with us Ms. Jasmine Carson and Mr. Jerome Drain. And they're going to go over some programs here with Wayne Metro. I believe maybe the highlight might be the RAP program, which is the water program that we have through GLWA.
Yep. Yep. And then we're going to introduce kind of some newer programs that may be offered. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
That's better. Okay. Sorry. I'm short. Okay. There we go. So again, good evening, everyone. My name is Jasmine Carson. I'm the department director at Wayne Metro for utility assistance and community engagement. And today, we just want to kind of give you an overview of some of the programs that could be offered to residents within the city of Allen Park. Just to give you a brief overview of Wayne Metro, we were founded in 1971 to provide, you know, low to moderate income families with support for services as great as utility assistance, Head Start, financial and mobility services, things of that nature. We currently have 75 different programs offered through our agency. We have over 21 sites and 14 Head Start locations as well. So we have been taking a universal approach as a one-stop shop for all of our services. So we have a universal application that can be accessed online. Or you can contact our connect center at 313-388-9799. And people can receive assistance as it relates to filling out the actual application. We try to remove any barriers for clients as well, so we kind of keep our documents limited so that if they turn in documents for one program, they don't have to resubmit the same documents for multiple programs. So simple ID, maybe your utility bill or property tax bill, depending on what services they're requesting, and possibly SCR or, you know, any associated documents related to that specific program. So wanted to introduce, as Mark mentioned, the RAP program. There are some slight changes. So the new RAP IBP, which is income-based program, this assistance you can receive up to $100 a month on monthly credits to your bill. And the assistance could be up to $1,200 per year towards your past due balances. So that was a change. Remember, they were getting that $25 credit a month. We felt like advocating for our clients, that may not have been enough for them. So making sure they got that at least $100 a month moving forward. Within this program, they can also receive up to $2,000 in conservation. So that's like minor plumbing repairs. They have those sneaky links. We can have someone come out and look and try to repair that in the home. So for RAP, it's a 200 FPO of the federal poverty level. So for four people in the home, that's about $60,000 a year. We have to make sure that they are responsible for the water in the household as well as have active water. And then the building can state resident, we just have to make sure that if they're renting the property, it says that they're responsible for the water. And then all of our flyers do have a QR code on them. I did bring flyers for everyone. There are some packets that'll be available in the back. If anyone wants to take any home, you can make copies. But they can scan that QR code and it'll take them directly to the link for our programs. And as I mentioned, the home water audit was a conservation audit. It kind of focuses on those sneaky links, those improper faucets that may have been installed. And then we look at bathroom and kitchen functions and things of that nature. So LIWAP, so this is one of our newest water programs, which Allen Park is opted into. So this is assistance up to $1,500 towards arrears. So what this means is that we can braid funding with the RAP program that you're opted into as well as LIWAP. And we can tie those funding together and they can get both programs for double the value. So we, this is for arrears only, so the client must have arrears to be opted into LIWAP. And we help with disconnection or restoration services as well. So again, RAP, they have to have active services, but LIWAP, we can get them restored and get them enrolled in RAP as well. So this is assistance for both drinking water and wastewater. Now, the eligibility for LIWAP is slightly different from RAP. So they have to be 150% of the federal poverty level, which is about $39,000 for a household of four. The municipality must be opted in, which you guys are, and a past due balance is required. No household income is required either. We just need an ID in that they're responsible for the water. Again, that is a flyer that will be provided to you all as well with income guidelines at the bottom. Our next program is the Michigan Energy Assistance Program. So this is for energy and gas. So they can receive up to $2,500 for MEEP assistance per fiscal year. So our fiscal year starts October 1 and ends September 30th of each year. So in addition to the $2,500 that Wayne Metro can assist with, they can receive an additional $1,700 from the state of Michigan. So we help, they have to apply for SCR, which is a state of emergency relief. We are, everyone in our agency are MyBridge certified, so we can help them fill out that SCR for them. If we have anybody with technology issues, they can come into our offices. We're open five days a week. Or they can make that navigation appointment over the phone. And we can walk them through and tell them how to submit those documents. We do provide financial education, budget conservation, energy education. We try to go out and see, you know, maybe change the light bulb, see if that will help them save energy and kind of help them budget to figure out kind of how to supplement those funds that they're saving with this program. Again, that is the flyer for this program. So for MEEP eligibility, they have to be 150% below the poverty level, which is $41,000 for a household of four. That income determination is made by MDHS. So we don't make any of the determination as it relates to this program. But I will say with the SCR, they are categorically eligible for a lot of other programs within the agency. And this is for residential accounts only, so no commercial accounts. Our next program is our MYHAVE program, which is the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund. So if any of you all were familiar with SARAH, which was like the rental assistance program, MYHAVE is for homeowners. So homeowners can receive up to $25,000 for anything related to their home. That could be reduced foreclosures, loss in utilities. We can do delinquent house expenses. I feel like this is a very, very generous program for homeowners and it doesn't come around often. And we're currently serving in between $8,000 and $15,000 homeowners. So as long as it's around, this was COVID-related, I encourage people to kind of, you know, take part of that program. We also have free income tax preparation. So we have tax preparers that are certified by the Internal Revenue Services. We prepare unfilled taxes up to three years back. We do tax time saving, which is encouraged. So we encourage people, you know, if they do get a refund, to kind of put that aside and save for, you know, maybe an emergency and things of that nature. We do have in-person and virtual options available. In order to qualify for the free preparation, you can make up to $60,000 a year. And then online self-preparation taxes are available to individuals at any income level. And we conserve residents and all residents in the state of Michigan. And then now we're going to talk about the regional advisory council, and I'm going to turn it over to Jerome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you to this honorable body for having us here this evening to just give you an overview of Wayne Metro, the services that we offer and the services that we want to provide for the residents here in Allen Park. And so, let's see, did I go forward? Oh, no. I can, yeah. Let's go back.
Uh-oh. Jerome?
Did we just? There we go. There we go. Okay.
Let's go back.
All right, there we go. Okay. So although we had the program overview, two of the other main functions of Wayne Metro and the commitment of the community being part of Wayne Metro's actual governing body is through our regional advisory councils. We have six advisory councils throughout Wayne County, and Allen Park is in region six. And with the regional advisory councils, what we have are our community, our customers, local businesses that are within the regional advisory councils, faith-based organizations, and also the school districts as well to participate in our advisory councils. As you can see, we, our last, our last actual presentation was for the city of Belleville. And we didn't get a chance to change that over to region six for Allen Park. But you are definitely in region six. And so with this, what we receive is we receive commitments and recommendations from actual customers in the region, organizations in the regions on the programs that we should have in the region, as in in the city of Allen Park and in region six, of which you are in. And so this is very important because Wayne Metro is what their governing structure is what's called tripartite. And that is a third elected officials, that is a third of the consumer sector, and then that is a third of the private sector. And so individuals that actually receive services and organizations that are working within the districts actually have a say and they are actually at the table in that the regional advisory councils select one person from the regional advisory council to actually be on the Wayne Metro Board of Directors. So they would be on the board with Mark, and they would be at the table when the decisions are made as it relates to services that'll be provided to the city of Allen Park. And so that's extremely important. And we are in the process now of recruiting additional regional advisory council members to come on board to be able to give us additional feedback, suggestions on the services that should be provided in the regions. And so I'm asking this body, of course, if you know of individuals, organizations, and/or consumers that use the services for Wayne Metro, if they may want to think about becoming a member of the regional advisory council for region six. I will be able to send out additional information and flyers on that to this body. If you have anyone, and I'll have cards for you as well. You can reach me directly, and I'll have my email information on that. And we will take a look and bring in the individuals that you recommend to become a part of our regional advisory councils. The next, let's see if we, oh.
Jerome.
I shouldn't bother that. Oh, no. Let me just. There we go. Okay. Thank you. And so this is just part of the actual flyer, a brochure that we have for our regional advisory councils. And as you can see, where we have them broken out, we have two regional advisory councils that cover the entire city of Detroit, region two and region three. And then we have them broken down by communities. And so for region six, you're looking at Allen Park, Melvindale, South Gate, Riverview, Wyandotte, Lincoln Park, Gross Eel, Ecorse, River Rouge, Trenton, Gibraltar, Taylor, Brownstown Township, and Brownstown, Woodhaven, Flat Rock. And Rockwood makes up region six. And so we are doing these presentations before all of the councils in Wayne County. And so we will be recruiting from the other communities that I just mentioned as well to become a part of the region six as it relates to the regional advisory council. So let me try this and see. Okay, all right, there we go. All right. Next, I wanted to just touch on the fact that Wayne Metro is also the lead agency for what we have, which is our Out Wayne County Continuum of Care. And that is our homeless coalition for out county. And of course, the homeless coalition is made up of different organizations, faith-based organizations, the Salvation Army, veterans of Wayne County, those types of organizations. And our mission is to go out and to assist individuals that may be homeless to be able to have support for them as it relates to getting them housed, getting them additional support specific to some of the programs that were just mentioned by Jasmine. And to assist them to get back on their feet and become, you know, the productive individuals in the community that we know that they are. And for many of us, we may be just one paycheck away from the situation that some of our homeless populations are in. And so we, we meet, the homeless coalition meets every other month. And we provide the assistance to the organizations, strategic planning, as well as funding to assist them with being able to assist our homeless population. On the, on the homeless coalition, we have organizations and first-line individuals, as in our fire departments and our police departments, that are the first line that may come in contact with our homeless population on a regular basis. And we have a number of organizations, a number of communities that have either a representative from their fire department or their police department that are on the homeless coalition. And so that is the second ask that I have of you this evening is if it's possible to identify someone from either the fire department and/or the police department that may be able to assist us and sit on the homeless coalition steering committee to give us suggestions on what we should do and how we can do a better job in identifying and addressing and supporting our homeless coalition, our homeless population. And so those are the two asks that, and that's why I'm, I'm last, is that those are the two asks that here at Wayne Metro, we are asking from this honorable body, if you are able to assist us with that. Because that is, those two organizations, the regional advisory council, are instrumental in the strategy of Wayne Metro and the services and where they are to be held. And the homeless coalition, Out Wayne County Continuum of Care, is the body that handles the, works with the homeless population in Out Wayne County. And Out Wayne County is considered every community with the exception of the city of Detroit, Highland Park, and Hamtramck. And so that's what I bring to you this evening. And again, I will have my cards as well as additional brochures for you to take a look at. And if you have anyone that you can identify, we would definitely look forward to meeting with them to see if we can bring them in to either the regional advisory council and/or the homeless coalition.
Thank you.
And with that being said, if it's the honorable body, if you have any additional questions, either Jasmine or myself would be available to you.
I think Mr. Kibbe wanted to. If I may through the chair, just a real quick disclosure. I am on the Board of Directors for Wayne Metro. I've mentioned that a number of times just because I don't want anybody to understand that that's, I am there. Jerome mentioned here a couple of things. We've been in the RAP program, the LIHAP, MIWAP.
LIWAP. It's a lot.
All the acronyms.
Yeah.
So we've joined all those. And again, Wayne Metro is absolutely great. We try to refer people there because it's a one-stop shop. Not only could they qualify for the RAP program, but they will look for other programs, as Jasmine mentioned, to try to help our residents as much as possible. And I know we don't have a lot of residents that are involved in the program. We keep advertising, so maybe if the mayor and council can get that in there, our visitors in the audience can get that word out. Definitely great programs and very helpful. As Jerome mentions, on this group here for homeless coalition, a program that I think most of Downriver people would be familiar with is Kreisnet.
Yes.
That's, actually, I believe that, as at the Elm Park Presbyterian Church, either coming up the first week in March or it already happened. It's scheduled to happen, I believe. I thought I read.
Kabrini just did it last.
Reading? Okay. Maybe that's the one I saw. So Kreisnet is definitely one that Downriver communities are more familiar with. And then just a real quick, I just want to mention that Wayne Metro did receive an award. And this is, if we can take this word back to the staff. They were named the Crane's 2022 Best Managed Nonprofit. And it's a great award, a great recognition for the staff that does all the work. Joe, we've been working with Wayne Metro now for 25 years almost. Just me and you alone, almost 25 years. Ain't the same.
Well, you're not that old.
And you, we were in elementary school when this, when we started working with Wayne Metro. But I believe, and I've said this numerous times at the board meeting, when we started working with them, they were probably maybe a $15 million to $20 million nonprofit.
Correct.
I think this last year alone, it was over, almost over $300 million.
Right.
313.
Yes, 313. 313, yes.
I think we're going to conveniently 313.
Right, 313.
I think it's going to probably roll back down to about 200 million. It's kind of the range, I think, 1 million to 2 million. This is an organization that is based out of Wyandotte with agency locations in Detroit. And this is a great organization to help. I feel very fortunate to be with them. I know you as well for some of the programs and that we've been working with. And we'll continue to try to work with you as long as we can. Just, we get the word out to the residents. That's the key. There's a lot of great programs there. There's a ton of money that's come down from the federal. That 313 million is federal dollars, your federal tax dollars. Take advantage of them and let's get them to the people that need them here in Allen Park and our neighboring communities.
Right, exactly. Thank you for that, Administrator Kibbe.
Do we have any?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have a question. How about the veterans? I used to belong to Downriver for Veterans, where we help out veterans downtown, Downriver. And there's quite a few of them. And there's a lot of homeless ones too. And on that club they would belong to, we make, we do a fundraiser for, to build little houses just for veterans. You just pay a minimal fee to get in, you know. And it would be great for Wayne County to do something like, we got a lot of land available. We could build a lot of little houses for those veterans. They still contribute to the houses, believe me. They pay their own bills, though, but at least they're home. And they get served meals or whatever out in the city, like Kreisnet and all that. That's something that we started, but it never came into provision. No, no, it never came.
And is that specifically Allen Park? Or is that part of veterans for Wayne County? Well, I could, I'll send you information.
That's the reason we started, that's the reason we started Downriver for Veterans.
Yes.
Because all the veterans, all the money that comes to Detroit, that stays in Detroit, never comes Downriver. And that's why we started this organization, to make Downriver say, hey, we got some help here. Okay? And same thing with Wayne, it should go Wayne County completely. I'm sorry. Wayne County, period.
Right. I'm sure that, I'm sure that if the two of you get together and exchange information, that something will come of that. So it's a very, very good contact.
I do. Yes, we do. We do.
I know that we do have the veterans group that meets there. Mr. John Perry meets with the veterans. I know that DCC and Wayne Metro are partners in a lot of different programs that they can help make sure we get those cross-communications going.
I'll get connection for you.
Definitely will. Definitely will. And if I may, two things that the city administrator could be indicated. For instance, you know, during the pandemic, you know, Wayne Metro was one of the lead agencies providing services for SARAH, which was COVID emergency rental assistance. And that, you know, they had a moratorium on evictions, but there were many, many individuals that, due to no fault of their own, were not able to pay, you know, their rents during that time. And we were instrumental in that. We were able to assist with over $130 million of rental assistance for our customers here in Wayne County. And that's not just Detroit. The bulk of that was in Out Wayne County. And she had mentioned the one other program, which is the MYHAVE program. It is similar to SARAH, but it is for homeowners. And that, that area median income is a family of four that's at $120,000. That would still qualify for those funds. And that is up to $25,000 to assist homeowners with, you know, back mortgages, back property taxes, back utilities, back insurance, those sorts of items. So that, that program is still in existence. And we are assisting as many individuals as we can with that. And so that, you know, that area median income. And so that, you know, that area med- median income is, is a lot higher than, than our usual FPLs of one fifty or two hundred percent. And that is at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Any other council members have any questions they'd like to put forward? You will, uh, leave any contact information if you would with, uh, city clerk?
Definitely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
A lot to digest. We'll now move to organizational business. The administrators report.
I gotta follow that up. I got nobody to complain except to me, myself on that one. Like, gotta move down a rock. All right. Good evening, Mayor Council, presidents. Thank you for allowing us to bring Wayne Metro in. Share the great programs there. I think there's a lot of, uh, good information there that we need to get out to the people, um, especially the, the last one, the LIHAP. Um, that median income of one hundred twenty thousand dollars, there's a lot of people that we all know that would follow, qualify in that criteria. If, uh, if there are any of those issues. Um, just, uh, updates on a couple of items here in the city, uh, going on. Uh, the replacement of the bleachers at the ice arena is scheduled to start March first, or March sixth, it's on Monday. The contractor will start with the bleachers that are behind the, uh, the, um, team benches. Uh, they're not, those aren't used very often. There's no playoff games coming up. There's no Elm Park hockey games coming up, so we'll be able to get those started and, uh, get that project underway. Uh, Parks and Recreation also, uh, has, uh, new scoreboards installed at Champion Park Diamonds, number two and three. One of the scoreboard was damaged during a windstorm last summer and, uh, so it needs to be replaced. It was re- replaced with, uh, insurance funds. And then the, uh, second scoreboard was purchased by the Festives Commission back in September. And then those are gonna be installed here, so it'll be ready to go here for the, uh, spring season. Uh, we have a few, uh, hires. I just want to go through, uh, what's going on in the different departments. Uh, on February twenty-first, the, uh, DPS hired Colin Guitar. Um, he is a, uh, a public service worker in the DPS. And, uh, they are, uh, DPS is now back to their, uh, budgeted, um, staffing level. Um, I entered, uh, Colin's information into my, uh, software that I utilize. Um, he's our youngest employee. And he was born in two thousand and four. I feel a lot of, I feel really old, actually, although Joe tried to help me there a little bit. So it's, it's good that we're getting some younger, younger people coming on board, but I thought it was bad when we're hiring the police officers that were twenty-one and le- or less than twenty-one, they could pull you over by not drink, so. The fire department hired, uh, Trevor Dionne, uh, on February twenty-fourth. He's an EMT paramedic. Forget the EMT, he's a paramedic. Okay. Uh, which is a partially trained employee under the memorandum of agreement that we signed with the, uh, fire union back in September of twenty-two. Remember, this is the program that allows us to bring in the paramedics and then we'll send them to, um, fire academy, uh, school to be, can train as a firefighter. And after they graduate from that program, they are a full-fledged firefighter. He'll be in here at that time to be sworn in with the, uh, the, the family and all that stuff. We wanted to let you know that he was brought on. So he's currently enrolled in Oakland County Community College, Oakland Community College Fire Academy, OCC. Uh, that's an eleven-week program that he's going through. Uh, just a little bit of information on Trevor. He's a surgical ICU RN at the Detroit Receiving Hospital. And upon graduation from the academy, he'll be a third generation firefighter. Um, just want to let you know that the chief and deputy chief are working, uh, hard to, uh, pull in a few candidates from the cadet program. I believe they were there last week. It was their, uh, their spring break and they were in the, uh, in the station doing a lot of shadowing and training. I think there was, uh, some pictures on Facebook that were showing them in the training process. Uh, so the, the chief deputy chief worked to fill those two vacancies, uh, that still remain within their budgeted, uh, um, uh, staffing level. Just another tidbit on Trevor, he was a division, division one soccer player. I'm not too sure where he went to school at though.
Michigan.
All right. He was at University of Detroit Mercy, uh, one of my alums. I, we didn't have a football program down there, so we had the room for soccer and basketball.
Yes.
And then, uh, just for the police department, they're actively recruiting at the police academy. There are eleven students that do not have jobs out of fifty-five. So that's what we're battling here. Uh, only eleven, twenty percent of the, of these students already had, or eighty percent of the students already have a job with an agency already. And that's, again, that's the uphill battle we have, uh, to recruit these young, uh, officers to Elm Park. Uh, they're bringing, hoping to bring on a few of those, uh, soon to fill the three current vacancies. And then we also have two pending vacancies, uh, with retirements that are, uh, soon to happen. So keep chugging along, trying to get people to come here and, and all that good stuff, so. I see on the audience, they're, uh, the Johnson family and, uh, their dad was a alum of UFD as well. As is Councilman Lloyd. Oh, very good.
Go Titans.
And, and, there you go. UFD is well represented in, I'll, I'll. We should get, I don't think it, do we get, do we get, uh, money for that?
We have a motion to accept and file the, uh, administrator's report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Thank you. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Now we come to public comments. Anyone wishing to come up and speak may do so. All we ask is that you provide your name and the street on which you live. We do not want to have your full address. Uh, you're limited to four minutes and we ask that you just be silent. For now, for public comment. Maybe a little young lady might come up. No one's coming up, we will close public comment and move to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda consists of claims and accounts and the payroll report. Motion please. Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blemmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is carried. Resolution one. To authorize the city administrator to submit applications for five community development block grant projects. Senior Public Services, Historical Museum Improvements, Kennedy Park Walking Path and Exercise Stations, Duda Park Safety Surface and AEDs for city facilities. Motion please.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by, ahead of time, Mr. Lally, seconded by Mr. Schleck. Perhaps we could go through these briefly one at a time and then have questions.
Okay. The, uh, so the community development block grant program, we have the applications are due, uh, at the beginning, uh, March tenth. Doesn't hurt to apply. The worst they can tell us is no. Um, out of the applications, we're guaranteed one, uh, and that's the, uh, public services and we'll put in for senior public services, twenty thousand dollars. That's already set by, uh, by Wayne County. Uh, we're also can re- apply for, uh, projects, um, a hundred thousand hours or more. We're guaranteed one, one hundred thousand hour project every five years. And we've had two already, um, but it doesn't hurt to apply. Again, the worst they can tell us is no. It's just a matter of a little bit of time to put the application. The applications are, uh, we submitting are for senior public services, working with, uh, Rod, with Rob from Parks and Recreation and Kyle. Uh, we're gonna focus a little bit more on the, um, and some senior service activities that we're already doing. This will allow us to get reimbursed for those, uh, activities. Uh, they have a number of trips in, uh, that they have scheduled with the senior services and that those are eligible, uh, reimbursement, uh, projects, uh, and then these mon- these monies will be due, will be available, uh, July one of twenty-three. Uh, we're gonna apply again for the historical museum improvements. This one, I, I guess maybe gonna be a little over a hundred thousand dollars for that request. To this date, we've received, uh, one, we've received basically two allocations, um, totaling three hundred and four thousand dollars, uh, for the museum. So when you, when you drive by and you see the paint has been removed, the porch is built, uh, and all that, that is all part of the grant aspects. No city money has been involved in that project. Um, again, the grant epic, the grant award was for three hundred and four thousand dollars to do that work. This project here would be to replace the windows and a, a number of other, uh, items addressing, addressing the, uh, the garage that is not, uh, an eighteen-eight garage, but we're gonna try to do everything we can to make it look as, uh, as best as, as possible. Uh, Kennedy Park Walking Path and Exercise Stations. Kennedy Park is in the, uh, area of, uh, Uter Drive and Southfield Road. It's near, uh, Rogers Elementary, which is a Melvindale, uh, pre-K, K-one school. Uh, in that area, we've, uh, just recently, uh, finished the, um, placecape that the, uh, at the, at that park. We added in a, uh, place, uh, place structure and the safety tiles. Total project there was two hundred thirty thousand dollars. Again, no city money involved in that project, uh, just the grant money from Wayne County. This, this project here will replace the current quarter mile walking track that is in the, uh, tucked in the, uh, corner, the south, southwest corner, southeast corner. Um, that was put in by the Festives Commission back about nineteen, about two thousand, uh, I think it was two thousand it was put in. Um, it's in disrepair and so we'll look to replace that and then also add a quarter mile track around the, uh, newly installed, um, sled hill, activity hill, recreation hill. Um, so we'll have a total of a qu- of a half mile track, uh, a quarter mile track and a half mile track total. Uh, again, that project we're looking probably gonna be around three hundred fifty thousand dollars for us for that application. Um, this, the fourth project would be the Duda Park Safety Surface. This would be to install safety surfacing around Barney, the swing set that's, uh, at the back of the project. The teeter, what do we, it was a teeter totter.
Seesaw?
Seesaw.
Seesaw.
Um, I, I call it, uh, uh,
Duck, duck goose.
Duck, duck goose.
Um, and the, um, uh, existing structure that has safety material around it's a, it's a mulch material. So this would be the safety tile that we've installed, uh, at Humpty Dumpty. We installed it at Kennedy and we installed it at Bri- Briar Rabbit. It's a, uh, a tile material and, uh, it's, it's easy to work, uh, to, to move across, so it's AED accessible. And that would be a nice complement to the existing tile that's, uh, there at the, uh, at Duda Park. Um, working with Councilman Lally and Aquinas, we know there's some repairs we need to get with and we'll work with Recreation to get those addressed as well. We had discussed, uh, possibly replacing the entire struc- uh, the entire park with that, uh, with the new safety tile. Um, but you'd be in excess of a million dollars. I just don't see that having any chance of being funded, uh, realistically. Um, and, and I was joking earlier, Barney is not going anywhere. And I mentioned jokingly to the mayor that, uh, she was not very happy with me. Neither were the council people either, so. Uh, so Barney will not go anywhere. We just want to make it safer around Barney and the other, other place structures there. The final item is, uh, AEDs. These are automated external defibrillators for all city facilities. Uh, unfortunately, here at city, at Elm Park, we have, I believe, three defibrillators, uh, outside of the fire department having the, uh, the equipment, the, uh, ambulances and the, the fire trucks. Uh, we have, uh, one, uh, in the, um, DPS now. We have two at Recreation. Um, I don't know what the total number will come up, but I think we're in the range of thirty-five, I believe, last time we were on, we're doing the, running the numbers. Um, and we'll put them in all the city facilities, a couple here in city hall, a couple in the PE, uh, basin, more in the, uh, DPS, more in the recreation center, library, uh, Palooche, and then we're also be looking to get them in all the, uh, and, and six of the police cars, which are mostly what we, we utilize on a regular basis. Um, this, this stems from, uh, a football player that collapsed at the, uh, Buffalo Bills, a player that collapsed. And it really shows a need that we need to be prepared in case that situation happens here at, at, at the city hall or any of our facilities. And, uh, so we're gonna be looking at that. I think it also goes to, to show that, that issue really shows that there's a need to make sure people are CPR trained. And, um, and, uh, I think, uh, Chief Cannon will be working on maybe something for the future on that with the, the magazine, trying to help, uh, find locations for people to get trained i- in the future for CPR. Um, but definitely a, a need for that. A project there probably be somewhere in the range of seventy-five thousand, a hundred thousand dollars for those AEDs. So we're just asking for permission to go ahead and submit those. Um, I did want to mention that we have a couple of projects here that, that have some, uh, engineering. We're gonna try to roll those in. If, if we're successfully awarded the, the grant, we'll try to war- roll that, those into the actual project as much as we can. But there could be some aspects of the engineering cost that may not be grant eligible. Um, if that is the case, I'll be working with Amanda and Tom to see if we can, money within our existing budget to make all that.
Thank you. You have a motion? I have a motion. Uh, any questions or comments regarding any of these grants? I can tell you that, um, many an hour is spent and, uh, well into the evening on, uh, and, and also some weekends, um, by our city administrator inviting these grants and, uh, we should be very thankful for the success that we've had in obtaining the, the funding that we have had. It's, it's not necessarily free money. As you said, sometimes there are engineering costs, but, um, we've been able to do quite a bit over the last few years in this community because we have someone who is familiar with these grants, knows how to write them and, and makes a very strong case for our community. So, thank you for that. There's no other questions? I'll take a vote. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Resolution has been approved. Resolution two. To approve the lowest quote for LED lighting in the community center from Haddix Electric in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars with funds from account one zero one seven seven one nine thirty-four triple zero. Motion please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lally. Someone like to tell us briefly what this is? It's your memo, you have to explain.
That's fine. Good evening. So over the bleachers, there's eighteen lamps or fixtures, nine on each side. And on the ice surface, there's thirty-eight. So the fifty-four, we're throwing, Kyle's best line is we're throwing good money at bad. We just replaced over a hundred and fifty bulbs just last week, just over the ice surface. So with this fourteen thousand dollar expense, we're guaranteed ten years of life on a warranty. And I don't know how long the UFO style lamps will last. Could be twenty, thirty years. They're secured, um, even if pucks hit them, they should, if we have to, we just take the lamp down and throw it out. Currently, we're throwing all these lamps in a recycling bin at ninety dollars for thirty lamps. So i- if you do math real quick, if we just replaced a hundred and fifty of them, that's a ton of money that we're, again, Kyle's line, we're throwing good money at bad. So the request is to basically revise them, renovate them, get rid of the old. We will assist with that by recycling them, getting them out of the building. It saves costs for our crew to help them. So in the meantime, we've got about a fifteen to thirty day window for ordering upon getting them on site. And Haddix thinks they can do it within about a day and a half to two days. There's no disruption to any events. We would delay the install over the arena side, or excuse me, over the ice until after May eighth, we start taking the ice out. In the meantime though, with the removal of the bleachers, we're able to access that area and start replacing above the bleacher areas. It won't disrupt the APCCF pizza, beer and wine tasting event. Uh, it won't any, uh, affect the flea market that the, uh, historical museum is gonna take, uh, June sixteenth and seventeenth, or seventeenth and eighteenth, excuse me. So there'll be no disruption, um, in the facility at all. And if we do have anything in there in the event, we will have it sectioned off, so. But the fifty-four lamps, it's just time. It, it's just time, so.
Does anyone have any, uh, questions or comments?
You're welcome.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Resolution is passed. Resolution three. To approve the purchase of three Kohler KCS ATFT generators and transfer switches for the three lift stations through the Sourcewell National Cooperative in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and three cents. Motion please. Motion by Mr. Marcos.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Mr. Murray.
I was waiting. Um, these are for three sanitary lift stations in the city, three that we have, uh, completely rebuilt. We have rebuilt in the last five years. They never had generators and currently do not have generators. We feel it is vitally important to put generators there for especially power outages as we currently went through, but we've been thinking about this for a few years. Um, currently, the operations are to take a pump over there when we lose power and bypass pump, which could take anywhere from a half hour to an hour to get a pump over there and do such. These would take a forty-five second delay, turn on, instant pumping, no basement problems, no sanitary issues. So we feel this is vitally important for our operations to put these in here. Just word of note. Generators and transfer switches are two different things, but they go together. You need a generator to start. You need a transfer switch to get the power to the device. So that's why you read three generators and three transfer switches. That is total cost for all of that. That is not including the installation. We currently are putting that out. We currently are putting that out for design and bid. This is just for the product to bring in.
Any questions or comments?
As far as I'm concerned, Mayor, as far as I'm concerned, it's a good idea because we didn't have it for a long time, it's about time we do that.
I agree. Every, one of our other lift stations and pump stations we have in the city do have generators on them currently, as well as most of our new facilities that we have built. I think it's just the way we all need to go.
Okay, well, second to what Mr. Lally said, and I think, you know, we're in the budget process right now, and I think it's important for people to know that I think over the last eight years since I've been around, I've seen a lot of very forward-thinking planning going on, trying to steadily make improvements and make sure that we're in the twenty-first century and that we're providing top-notch services, so very much appreciated. If there's no other comments, perhaps for a vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you. Now we come to other business. First and second reading of proposed ordinance number zero one twenty twenty-three. Motion please.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Have discussion or questions regarding this ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Will the city attorney please read ordinance number one?
Good evening. First reading of proposed ordinance number one for twenty twenty-three by title only. An ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending chapter two, administration, article one, in general, by the addition of section two dash one, city seal, to codify and define permitted uses of the city seal. Second reading of proposed ordinance number one dash twenty twenty-three. An ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending chapter two, administration, article one, in general, by the addition of section two dash one, city seal, to codify and define permitted uses of the city seal.
Come to first and second reading of proposed ordinance two dash twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lally, second by Mr. Marcos. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We'll have the first and second reading by the attorney.
Proposed ordinance number two dash two, two zero two three. An ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending chapter two, administration, article six, finance, division four, conveyance or leases of lands of the city, to authorize the sale of the vacant parcel of land located on Roosevelt Boulevard, Rosedale, excuse me, Rosedale Boulevard identified as tax ID thirty dash zero one five zero three zero three six five dash zero zero zero. Second reading by title only, a proposed ordinance O two dash two zero two three. An ordinance of City of Allen Park Code of Ordinances, amending chapter two, administration, article six, finance, division four, conveyances or leases of lands of the city, to authorize the sale of the vacant parcel of land located on Rosedale Boulevard identified as tax ID number three zero oh one five oh three oh three six five zero zero zero. Thank you.
And with that, we now come to council comments in this evening. Mr. Slack will lead us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'd like to start out with what I'm sure everyone up here will mention at some point at the very beginning. I want to give a heartfelt thanks to everyone that worked so hard making sure that they restored power, definitely putting their lives in danger doing so, even in some cases where they themselves or their families didn't have power. And I especially want to give thanks to the fire department, the police department, DPS. I mean, it's just volumes, what I've heard and what I saw, and it's really inspiring. It definitely makes a difference. And I know you guys are out there not, and gals are not doing it just for the sake of things, you're doing it because you care for the community, you want what's best. It showed, it really showed. So I definitely want to thank you for that. And I want to say to all the residents that lost power, I feel you, I understand, it's, it wasn't easy. I heard horror stories about losing food and the amount of money this, and it just, laundry list that we could easily make from what I've heard about from our partners at DT and consumers in other parts of the state, and, you know, thirty-five dollars is just not enough. I mean, it, we can make a long list, but, you know, I believe in accountability, and I believe that it's time that our state really takes action that, that we need to really hold accountable, unaccountable, call it like it is, you know? I believe that, or like a slate of reforms, something needs to happen. And other than that, like I said, thank you, I can't say that enough. I mean, it's just horrible to be without power and then, so, thank you, thank you. That I yield.
Mr. Levens.
So the other day, I was working with my coworker and I told this bad dad joke, because he was like, man, I'm freezing, and I said, well, go stand in the corner, it's ninety degrees. You're welcome. So first off, I just want to say thank you to our public safety departments and fire and police of what you guys did this week, and we, this reminded me back twenty years ago, two thousand and three, when the northeast of the United States had a blackout, so it just, that type of stuff, and I say every, try to say every meaning that you need to support your local businesses, because like Gary said, that some businesses like for foods supply, they lost some of their food, and this is the time, same with twenty twenty, when we shut down, this is the time to keep supporting your local businesses, their families, your neighbors, so please go out and support them. The other day, the community fairs with the American Legion and VFW came together, and we are still working on our Vietnam and beyond memorial and the Champagne Park memorial, and we have our grants, but please, if you can, make some donations, you can do that at the Parks and Recs Department. Everything makes a difference. Thank you to our DDA department, updating on the Facebook groups of the events that's going to be happening this year. Just a suggestion for maybe our magazine to have maybe these dates in the magazine or like how we had the recycling where you can take it off and put on our, the refrigerator, and also thank you to our director that's updating each week of what's going on to the DDA. I really love to see that, and every department just updates of what is going on. It's just, again, we, like we always say, we have a great team in the city, and we do, and I thank each and every one of the departments, the directors, everyone for that. And finally, I just want to say, even though there's been some bad times right now with the electricity and stuff, our schools, athletic departments are doing fantastic. I saw the competitive cheer team, they're going to states, we had, it's just the wrestling and swimming, it just, everything, I saw a map that the softball team is like the best in our state and stuff, so again, keep supporting the students and local businesses and everything in Allen Park, and like I always say, stay positive and God bless, and I yield. Thank you.
Mr. Marcos.
Good evening. Again, I'll reiterate what everybody's going to say, the police department, the fire department, DPS. I was standing in my driveway at five oh two on Wednesday and heard the explosion, the transformers blow up right by my house, and I heard nothing but sirens for three hours. So these guys are out there working for days, they still have families to take care of as well, and they're out there clearing branches, taking care of traffic, just trying to keep the mess at a minimum. So again, thank you guys, the police department, the fire department, DPS, and I want to say something about the citizens of the city. It's amazing, they're all out there working. I'm going to give a shout out to an old friend I grew up with in high school, another Allen Parker, Bernie Fallahy, out on Manor Avenue picking up branches, carrying branches, helping neighbors. This is the kind of people we have in this city, and I want to thank all you guys, you're great, thank you for being such a great community. One small note that I'll bring up, I want to thank people who've come to our meetings, continue to come, please come, we enjoy you coming, we always value your input, we welcome you to our meetings, please come. And last note, today is car keys and small change day. With that, good night.
You'll have to explain that. Councilman Lally?
Thank you very much. I do want to thank every one of you, whatever that said, I'm going to say the same thing, and I definitely want to thank the DDA director for keeping us up to date. That's very nice what you do. And I want to thank the, especially the DPS department hugging around, and they, they're doing a hell of a job, heck of a job, I'm sorry. And that, you know, if the citizens complain too much, just have patience, guys, because those guys work about twenty-four hours a day to get our city cleaned up. Yes, there's a few people that help, but a lot of people complain, and my phone rang all the time, and I keep telling them, give them a chance. Those guys have been working twenty-four hours a day, they need a break too. Their houses are out of power too, and their houses, probably the tree fell down, you know? So they're doing a heck of a job in the police department and the fire department. And I do, at this time, I want to thank the Knights of Columbus for honoring me for the sixty-nine years of thirty-seven seventy-four Knights of Columbus in Allen Park for being an existence. They honor me for what I do, and for what I do for the community, and for what I do for the KC, and for what I do for every other organization I belong to. And I want to thank them, and I want to thank who came to my party, I appreciate it, all the brother knights and guests, and the mayor came over there, I want to thank you again, Mayor. It made me feel real good, my family was there, my daughter came in town from New York, you'll miss that occasion, and I can't say anymore about that, because whatever I do, I do it because I want to do it. Nobody tells me what to do, I do what I want to do, and I do it to help people. They help me, I help them, if they don't help me, I still help them. And same thing goes with the Allen Park, we got to help each other, we got to help each other and stay intact. Yes, we do need to clean up our yards, you know, all the time, not just a little bit. We'd like to keep this Allen Park beautiful, come back as a jewel as it was, and we want to come back to that point. And as far as everything else, I thank you for coming to the meeting, and God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd.
So it was very interesting, obviously, and I think it's interesting whenever we have these kind of emergencies, as everyone has mentioned up here, it really shows through the true nature of a community and the true nature of individuals, and just to everybody's points. I think that it is a testament to what an amazing community that we have, to our public employees, our police, fire, Department of Public Works, doing everything they can to make sure that everybody is safe in an emergency situation, but down to individuals. I had friends that were driving generators across town to family members, I had people that were, you know, three, four families coming together into one house because that one person had power, people checking in on their neighbors. Benny Elementary, opening up their doors to the community to charge their phones, to, you know, watching Netflix movies to be able to use that. It is truly a testament to what an amazing community that we have here in Allen Park, and when we go through these emergency times, we need to lean on each other, and I, it's one of these weeks that I was incredibly proud to be in Allen Park, very thankful for that. And to that same point, I do want to thank Wayne Metro for their presentation. I think that going through those programs, it's, you don't know how important those programs are until you need them. And some of those things that they offer as far as your water or your utilities or paying your back mortgage or anything like that, those can be the difference between somebody staying in their home and being on the street and just giving them that support that they need to be able to get through a difficult time, which I think is really emblematic to what we're talking about here. So I would really encourage anybody watching today, anybody in the room, if you know somebody that is struggling, please, 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 reach out, because as Administrator Kibby mentioned, these are your tax dollars. This is your money that is here for that purpose, and so when you need that, it's there for you, so reach out. So I'm very, very thankful for Wayne Metro for their presentation and everything that they do. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Valerius.
So again, it sounded like a broken record, but I just wanted to, again, thank all our city departments, police department, fire department, I think Chief Cant said that you responded to a record number of calls?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. So, I mean, talk about just the efforts just to respond to downed power lines and branches and just general emergencies is commendable, as Councilman Slack said, it's extraordinary, but it was also an extraordinary event that caused everyone in Allen Park and all our departments to kind of step up and help each other out as a community. I had a neighbor who called, got in touch with me because a huge branch came down, it was blocking our street, and I said, well, she went on the C Click Fix site and reported it and everything else, and I said, well, when I get up in the morning, I'm going to go down there with my chainsaw. So I went out in the garage and I cleared everything out, I gassed up the chainsaw and I got all excited, got my gloves out, boots, safety glasses, and I was all ready to go to work in the morning because didn't have school. And then I got up in the morning, and then she had texted me and said that DPS came by at like at three AM and cut it all up, and it was gone, nothing, so I wanted to cut something up. I was dejected and upset, so I put it all back in the case and just went and did absolutely nothing because it was a school day off. So, yeah, but, you know, it just goes to show you, like I said, she said, yeah, she heard, you know, the sound of them working outside, even though it was three AM, you know, was still evidence that stuff was getting done and things were getting cleaned up, and they were, the fact that they were out there at three AM doing it just speaks wonders in regards to what they did for our citizens and continue to do each and every day, emergency or non-emergency. So with that, again, I thank all the department heads, I think all the city employees, all members of the fire department, police department, and everyone involved in, you know, like I said, some pretty tough circumstances for our residents and people throughout the state of Michigan, and actually the country, so. And with that, I thank everyone for coming tonight, and I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Mizzi, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you all for coming out, God bless you and good night.
We're just going to make a recording of you. I really don't have too much to add. I try and communicate to all of our departments how much I appreciate their work, and I try and do that, not just when we have crises arising, but daily. Because as I look around, my perspective is that this, we're a team. This council is a team, the department heads are a team, and I think we've got a pretty fine team working right now. They share comments, they share jokes, they share opinions, and they share workload, and they are always trying to help one another out. It occurred to me that, you know, oftentimes when you're reading people's comments, they seem to be under the impression that because you're an elected official, you're not impacted by anything that happens. I'm not sure where that comes from, but I can tell you that there are plenty of people sitting here who had power outages, who had food losses, who had other things to deal
sitting here who had power outages, who had food losses, who had other things to deal with, so we're all dealing with the same thing. Big kudos to the school, I'm very pleased to see what Benny did. The community center is always open during normal hours. They, they held a tournament. I even read one of my Facebook friends who said she went over to the community center on Saturday, charged up all of her devices, I think she grabbed something to eat, and she said, I saw some great hockey games too, so she, she got her entertainment from that. Other than that, you know, DTE has been getting a lot of feedback, but if you want to get upset with somebody, I guess it might be Mother Nature, because hurling ice storms at us after you've had a fifty-degree day isn't really nice. And you can talk all, all you want about grids and infrastructure, but when you got ice on lines that, according to the channels I was watching, equates to fifty pounds, and it's yanking the wires out of the poles and out of the transformers, and it's knocking down trees, there's not too much you can do about that. But appreciate the, the workers from DTE, the, the ones that came in from other states. I don't know if anyone saw my posting, but all DTE employees get involved when there's a crisis of this nature, including those who work in offices. I have a personal friend who works in HR, and she was pulling a fifteen-hour day because they go out in the field to make sure that people are not crossing by any taped-off areas, just so that the workers can focus on the job that needs to be done. So a lot of kudos, a lot of appreciation, a lot of empathy for people who are still having to deal with brownouts, who had to deal with major losses of food, et cetera. But we'll survive, our buildings are still standing, nobody's dropping bombs on us. And with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Motion by Mr. Lally. Second by Mr. Marcos. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you, we are adjourned at seven twelve.